I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where my nation under God, indivisible, with all due justice for all.
Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes, questions, additions to the agenda as presented? I got a motion by Sean Ryan, seconded by Rick Siler, to approve the agenda as presented. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye. Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. First is the amendment to the resolution of...Mike, are you gonna take this or Ken?
I will.
Okay.
That council can recall back in preparation for the January 7th, 2020 council meeting, Chris Cavett and engineers were predicting, trying to predict final MINDOT plan approval and needing to be ready once the final approval came. Well, as we anticipated in those early documents, we had set February 21st as a tentative bid date with the understanding that there could be a delay in receiving final MINDOT approval on the plans and specs to be able to go out to bid on the project. Those didn't come in until January 27th, I believe it was, and because of that, we've had to revise the formal resolution that approves the plans and specs and orders the advertisement for bids. And so, in your packet tonight in this memo is that the rework of those dates provides that Chris has already got it advertised on MINDOT's E-Advert and on the SEH and the Quest CBN websites. The official notification in our newspaper would begin later this week and the following week with the idea that bids will be taken on Friday, March 6th at 10:00 a.m. And ultimately, the consideration that could be to the council on March 16th is the expected timeline. So, the action you have in front of you is approval of the resolution. It actually is a resolution amending the previous resolution that you adopted on January 7th. And so, the new date is now being amended is that bids will be received on Friday, March 16th and considered by the council on Monday, March 16th.
Bids will be...
On March 6th.
Excuse me.
And considered by the council on March 16th.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
I just want, Mike, March 6th and they open the bids and you only, we need the whole week and qualify the bids, make sure that they're qualified. Is that why we need the whole week to do that? Besides the fact that the meeting, our next meeting is until the week after.
Yes. And part of that is also going back to MINDOT as the major player in it is that we've got to make sure we take a look at that the number is going to work for them before we award a contract.
During that week, they'll be involved in that as well?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Because I thought we could have a special meeting if you, if it wouldn't make any difference to move the pastor.
No, we need that time to verify the bids and also to work with MINDOT behind the scenes to take a look at all of the financial breakdown, the cost, to determine what ends up being each entity's share in that process. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion by Rick Siler, seconded by, excuse me, Maggie Bass to approve the resolution of amending the dates from our previous resolution. If there's any other comments, all in favor say aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Jim?
Honorable mayor and council, tonight I have before you a joint powers agreement with the Southwest Metro Drug Task Force. We have been part of this task force for five years right now and continue to have a good working relationship with the agents on it and the commander. They have done many hours of investigation for us in our jurisdiction. Currently, we have a couple investigations going on. So, it is a very nice benefit that we're able to access their expertise and their manpower or person power. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Just for the investigative purposes that they're able to provide to us and follow through because we don't have the personnel to put into a full-time investigation, but because six agents and a commander are already replaced, they're able to share some of that time for our jurisdiction. The governing board last year did increase the dues as they were working towards getting away from relying on forfeiture money in the budget. So, that was a change from last year to this year, which ultimately doubled our dues rather than 4,200, it went to 8,400. We had talked about that in our budgeting meeting in fall. But again, I think it's for the money that we do give towards the task force, that it is a great benefit to our community for that. Tonight, I have the commander, Matt Carnes, here. He was just gonna give a little brief update about where they're at with the Death Drug Task Force and some quick questions if you want. We don't want to take up a lot of your time tonight. But he was able to make the meeting, so I will let him come up and just talk. If you have any questions afterwards, feel free to ask him.
All right. Welcome. Evening. I'm Matt Carnes. I'm assigned to the task force of the Gander. I worked at the sheriff's office in Scott County, started the task force in October of 2019, so I've just been there a few months. Like the chief was saying, another nice benefit to, partly what you were saying too, is that the equipment that we have down at the task force is available in the city of Dupre. We have vehicle trackers, night vision goggles, portable radios, other things. It's not just manpower, person power that's available. It's also part of being a member of the task force is the equipment's available to which agencies with budgets. It's gonna type, so if you end up borrowing our equipment, it's something that's good. For 8,400 bucks, it's a great deal. Right now, currently what we're seeing for some of the drug trends is whether the meth is coming back up now. Before, it wasn't as prevalent, but it's starting to become more prevalent. Some of the search warrants and the work that we're doing. Heroin is still there. We're currently working on another case. Hopefully, it goes to the river was back in October, where it's five gallons of heroin that we had seized over Minneapolis area that did have direct connect down here to the Scott County area. We are currently working on a couple cases in the city of Dupre that do touch your guys' community. And if we do work cases, it doesn't always stay within Scott County, it does go to the Minneapolis, San Paul area, but it does have a direct connects back to Scott County and Dupre. And right now, the city of Hutchinson, police department is looking to put an agent back on, so we're trying to increase our numbers again and trying to get more agents on to try and get control of the drug problems and the community here outside and get the drugs back in. So, you guys have any questions from us all?
I just have a quick one. So, I totally agree. It's a great program and 8,400 dollars doesn't seem all that much. It provides you a reliable funding pool for you, but because I understand seizures and stuff can vary dramatically. But if there is, where is that forfeiture money gonna go if we increase this to 8,400, but then you still all of a sudden get forfeiture money? Does that just go into your general budget or a slush fund or do we get some of that money back, corated to the cities to help cover this 8,400? I just wanna make sure Dupre gets their fair share of any of that forfeiture money.
Totally agree. Yeah. The forfeiture money, so the task force is majority funded through a grant. We get a grant from the state of Minnesota. The forfeiture money that we get either from the federal government, from the state, goes back in operating costs. The money that we get from the forfeiture helps us maintain our escrow. Okay? So, you're not necessarily giving a C O check at the end of the year for 400 dollars. The 8,400 dollars will help us maintain our level of service throughout the whole year. That's what we're banking on. We wanna get away from saying the federal government or the state from our forfeiture is gonna be 5,000 dollars a year, let's say, or 50,000. We'd wanna get away from that to where that doesn't even come in our budget. So, we're able to say the grant and then just come to the dues, membership dues, is quite the same for us.
Well, you see where I'm sitting though.
Yeah.
I'd like to have some control over, or at least our chief of police be informed that how much, is it 5,000 or is it 105,000 instead of just sitting out there and you guys making decisions how you wanna pay with, but then still coming to the city residents and the county residents and asking for money. So...
Yes.
What are the control, can you just explain to me what the controls are? Does Jim get that report every year that says this is what he got that he can report back to us?
Yes.
Just so we're stewards of the taxpayer dollar?
Yep. So, chief is a member, voting member. So, he has a say in what happens at the task force. That's part of the 8,400 dollars. Every quarter, we have a meeting and during that meeting, I present them with the finances of the task force. It has the breakdown for the forfeiture, the matching fund, the escrow and all that. So, every couple months, he's getting financial reports for the task force. If there's something that he has an idea or a concern on, he can definitely bring that up and that can definitely be addressed.
Okay. Is that report available to the council? If we wanted to see that, just to see how it breaks that, you know?
Yes, I'd have no problem.
And where it is and where that money is spent so we can answer to the taxpayers?
Yes, I'd have no problem with that at all.
That'd be great. Thank you financially.
Could you please touch, like, who's involved in the overall task force? What entities?
Yes. So, it's Scott County Sheriff's Office, Carver County Sheriff's Office, Shakka Police Department, Hurley Police Department, Claude County Sheriff's Office, and then Hutchinson will be coming back. Those are the agents growing on their task.
The other cities that are involved that don't have agents?
So, the other cities that don't have the agents are gonna be Bell Plan, Dupre, Jordan. There's Lester Prairie, that's controlling, South Lake, Penetaka, that controls money. There's the city of Victoria.
It's Carver.
Carver, yes, I believe they did redo their dues this year. There's been a few that have pulled out their dues, some that have come back on. So, it's kinda out of the pools each year. It's usually at the 2,100 dollars a month, it's really out of the pool each year. So, whatever agency except for Al Greenburg in Scott County is contributing, either an agent or money.
Okay. And you put that report together monthly, quarterly, yearly?
Quarterly.
Quarter.
Do you mean for the meetings or the financing?
Yeah.
Quarterly.
Okay. Is that possible, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I noticed there, at least there's a reasonable expiration date to the agreement. That's why I'm assuming it just runs until we get out.
Yearly. It's a yearly joint powers agreement.
Okay.
On the, on the last, on the signature page, just it indicates January 1st to December 31st.
Okay.
And that, that's through the state, the state auditor once a yearly, even though like their grant is a two-year process, they want the agent or the agreement signed every year.
Jim, are there any changes to the agreement or the operation since last year?
Only with personnel.
Yeah. So, one change was that if you had an agent on the task force, they were re, they were giving part of, the task force was paying part of the salary for each agent, 3,000 dollars a month. This year, they did away with that. So, if you have an agent on the task force, you're paying the whole salary. Is what they, is one change from last year to this year.
And if a, if a department is providing an agent, they're not paying dues, but in essence, that is their due to have an agent on it.
And I was just curious, chief, how much time do you spend on the, does the governing board take of your time?
Meetings are, meetings are generally an hour and a half or so. They're normally held up in Cologne, just a central location for everybody to be able to meet in Cologne at the highway department up there. So, we have them up there. But yeah, hour and a half every couple months.
Do we do them every three, is it, or?
Yeah, quarterly.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. But yeah, that's generally what goes on.
The force has a lot of autonomy.
The, the task force?
They do only meet every other month?
Yeah. Yeah, they're, well, the end of the year, we authorize a budget for them and then that's kind of what the quarterly meetings are, is just looking at that budget if they're staying within the budget. That's where we, we can make changes or whatever's necessary with that. But generally, that's the idea of the governing board is to set those, the operating function of it and the budget and just let that process go then. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief or the commander?
No, just wanna say thank you that the task force is available to us.
Okay. I guess I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Check it.
Of the joint powers agreement, and I guess seconded by Rick Siler. If there's any other comments, questions? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have is a preliminary final plat of Deutschland first edition. This is a plat by Mark Deutsch. It's a lot directly south of Walgreens. You can see on the overhead there, the outline of that. Zooming in a little bit, so the plat has been on basically an outlaw condition since Walgreens was constructed. A few years back, they built First Street Southeast with a development agreement with the city council at that time that allowed them to build the road and then the plat until 2020. And they have to have the plat done by June and that's why they've gotten bored with the plat here at this point. So, pretty simple plat, just one lot and the right of way. We did have a public hearing at our planning commission meeting on January 22nd of 2020. We had a recommended approval of a 4-0 vote to approve the plat. Plat itself overall is 1.59 acres, including the right of way that will be dedicated. As I said, the previous development agreement logged for the construction of First Street Southeast as long as the plat dedicated that roadway by June 1st of 2020. Now, we have a couple of punch lists items that have to get wrapped up on the actual street construction before we accept that. And that would come in front of the council at a later date, but very minor things on the punch list will be done. At the planning commission meeting, we talked about very conceptually an idea that Mr. Deutsch had for construction of an apartment building on the site. I just wanna note that it was very conceptual at this point. We talked very generally about what the building might be, how many units, but he has not applied for anything at this point. And we'd obviously have to have future man use and approvals for that to occur. Right now, the land is actually some V2 community commercial, so it'd have to be rezoned to contain just apartment building on that property. The other option you looked at was first floor commercial apartments above, but it's really beyond the scope of what we're looking at tonight, just being the plat itself. Here's a preliminary plat drawing. This is actually just one of the sketches of an apartment building that he showed on there. This could change very drastically from that point of just parking around the perimeter. And then, this is really what we're looking at tonight, just the one lot, one block with that First Street right of way. So, very simple plat. Ultimately, staff in the planning commission do recommend approve the resolution. It's in the packet that would approve the plat at the one finding, then eight conditions approving the preliminary and final plat of Deutschland first edition. And just a couple of photos here for you as well. Like you can see, it's just the open area between the townhome, the York Townhome area on the south and then bound by Walgreens and the home. And if you look at air photos have been by the property, you'll see the segment of First Street in there. And that hasn't been open to traffic yet again because it hasn't been dedicated to city in right of way. And then, like I said, we'll have the final punch list items completed here prior to the spring and then that'll be opened up for basically public traffic should people want to use it. But really, at this point, it's only accessing into that site until the Beckeys property would develop and further allow that to continue to the west.
We have a warranty on that once it's accepted.
Yeah, and once, on the public road, as with any other street that we would have accepting at that time, the council would approve that. Then, two-year warranty period would go on the road at that point that we accepted. So, we haven't even started the warranty period for the First Street at this point.
And there's no park fee because it's an allotment?
Park fee and all that was actually addressed in the report.
I think it was already...
If I remember right, the outlaw within Prague Estates fourth edition, which actually was more than 15 years ago, had already covered the park dedication fee at that point, low air collecting for water access charge, sidewalk fee, warning center fee, and the street seal code fee for the portion of First Street. Prague fourth, we collected all the land on that already. But we will collect per residential unit should an apartment building be built on that, that building at that time. Now, dedication amount upfront with the plat and then the kind of per unit charge.
Can you briefly give an update on the status of First Street continuation? By the park church or whatnot?
Yeah. So, at this point, we do have a development agreement with Holy Trinity that they're to continue their roadway once the road has gotten to them. The language to trigger that isn't the greatest in the development agreement. I believe it was 2003. So, it's still in place. And then, I've been talking with the church. They think they have a desire to get that portion completed. But again, it still doesn't lead anywhere at this point, so we're not really pushing that. The Beckeys property is obviously the missing link between the two. The Beckeys actually came to the public hearing for the plats. At the time, I don't know if they've been entertaining offers to sell or not at this point, but I don't, I don't, we don't really see a need to push that through at this point. We certainly could make it a public project, but then we'd have to condemn public right of way in order to do that. Politically, I don't know if there's a big need to push that at this point.
Well, my personal opinion would be to keep the options open and have that discussion into the future, especially if there's gonna be development on this site. Because it is a pedestrian, there's access to the buildings and all that. So, there's some benefits to the community, I think, if that street were...
Oh, certainly. Yep. And yeah, we've, like I said, I probably talked with Holy Trinity probably a good 10, 11 times on that road extension in the agreement. And I know they have plans to do some parking lot redevelopment and maybe even an addition there. So, might see their excitement sooner and later than a lot of the Beckeys property to work on.
Any other questions, comments to attend? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the final plat of Deutschland first edition, someone?
Second.
You have a motion by Maggie Bass, seconded by Bruce Wolf. If there's no other comments or questions, all in favor say aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0.
All right, okay. Next item we have is a request for variance V1 2020 for a car wash exit door variance at the Post Quick Trip store. As we've looked at back at our first meeting in January, the conditions permit the plat was approved for the land at the northeast corner of the intersection of Shalupski Avenue Northeast and Turnpike 19. And this is obviously the same project that we're looking at here. So, a little background, the planning commission did review this matter at their January 22nd, 2020 meeting. The request for a variance will allow the dryer door to remain open at the car wash during the dry cycle, which is a 90/90 second dry cycle. The zoning ordinance at this point requires both dryer door and the washer side door to remain closed. And they're wanting to vary from that, have the dryer door open during the dry cycle. Noise considerations are really why the city implemented these regulations back up near 2000. While noise is an issue, it was noted that it would not be a nuisance violation. And really, what it came down to for the variance is that we have specific criteria that must be found to approve a variance. The one that could not be found in staff and planning commission's recommendations, that the lot was not unique. So, large lot, pre-leased and developed. And what it came down to is that there's room to add length to the car wash bay in order to keep the door closed and allow the car to dry before that door would open. Or they alternatively could just put an onboard dryer or different equipment to fit within the existing car wash bay and dry before the door would open. We did have a letter that was written to the record from the owner of Memories of Mount Stones Academy. Shantel, she's actually here again this evening. And the main concerns were obviously due to noise. And again, while I noted it would not be a violation based on the expected sound of that car wash, obviously, we can't test that, that was actually built. But it would certainly be a disruption and that's what we also noted in the staff report as well. At the meeting, we also had Dean George, real estate manager for Quick Trip, noting that they were committed to the project even if they did not build the car wash. So, just wanted to point that out, that was a public comment that was also made at the meeting. So, a little site plan review here. The car wash is proposed in the very north edge of that building. Basically, you'd have a conditional 20 feet to add on the bay. I noted if they added on the east side versus the west side, and I did not think the east side would be a good place to add that. We have queue space for cars lining up to get in that car wash, which could be interfering with large semi-traffic, which is directed to this axis of George Avenue. Wouldn't be a good idea to further stack the cars in that area. But on the exit side, the dryer side, adding 20 feet on if that was real, they wanted to take, would allow a large vehicle such as a Suburban or a full-size pickup truck to exit and still have room to wait for entering the drive-out exit out of the site. So, that was really what it came down to, just was a need physical reason for the site limitations to approve any variance for the car wash door to remain open. So, ultimately, the planning commission did recommend a 4-0 vote to deny the variance and not allow that dryer door to remain open during the dry cycle of the car wash. There's a couple of photos here. You see the distance from the daycare building and then the car wash should be located just beyond the tree line to the east here on the site. So, it'd be a little perspective between 200 to 300 feet between the car wash and those buildings there. And I think with that, I'll just leave this up. So, what you have in the pack is actually a resolution. We'd be looking to have you approve the resolution, which would deny the variance, kind of mix up languages for you. So, approval would deny the variance request. Just to be very clear on that.
Ken, just for, it was in the packet, but just maybe for added context, can you explain why a few of the other car washes in town are allowed to keep their doors open?
Yep. So, we have a few other car washes. So, the other Quick Trip in town was actually granted a variance back in 2017 due to site constraint limitations to keep the car wash as far away from the residential homes in that area as possible. And there's just site limitations on adding length to that car wash, again, to queue vehicles and then allow them to exit safely onto the public road. So, that was a variance that was granted. Other car washes that were built prior to this being in place was the Holiday Car Wash on 10th Avenue Northeast. That was actually what led into the sound ordinance being put in place for car washes. There was noise going across Greenwood Park to the west. The car wash next to Casey's was constructed prior to the ordinance going into effect. And then, two car washes have been approved to meet the requirement. One of them was the car wash by McDonald's, which I actually have to call up, follow up with as their door tends to pop open before the dryer is done, when I went and did research recently. And then, the other one was a car wash at Coburn's, which was ultimately not constructed even though we did approve it, but that record the doors to be closed.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments to attend? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution, which denies the variance. I will second that. I got a motion by Sean Ryan and seconded by myself to... Then I will second that. I got a motion by Sean Ryan and second by myself to approve the resolution which denies the variance. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Okay, passes five-zero.
Thank you. I assume Mike, you're here to take this one?
I am. Mayor and council members, tonight you have scheduled on your agenda to, Ken, can you bring up... This is just a overall map of our primary service area for ambulance services, so everybody has a general idea of the coverage. But if we go back and reflect on the last couple of meetings, the ambulance topic has been on the table for discussion for the month of January, and now as we continue into February. At the January 7th meeting, you heard a presentation from North Memorial Health about their company and the ambulance services that they provided with the city over the past 10 years, from 2010 to this current year. Council heard information about their service performance data covering ambulance operations, from response times to call volume, to types of calls, and patient destinations, and all those kinds of things. They also provided for the city's benefit and the council's benefit, a renewal agreement covering both the ambulance service agreement and the building lease agreement that would run from May 1 of this year until April 30 of 2025. The primary reason in getting that out so early instead of the May 1 renewal is that, if you recall, Pat Coyne, who was here at the January 7th meeting, retired in January, and so wanted to have that at least on the table before he left and retired. With a notable change that we have, as I have in the memo, there was a change in the building lease agreement to the city's benefit, where they are now contributing or proposing to contribute more towards fertility costs in the building leased than what was there previously. Following that meeting is that we heard from representatives of Mayo Clinic Health Service, and I should stop and make sure to introduce for the council's benefit, with us tonight from Mayo is Paul Drucker and Kirby Johnson are in the audience, as well as from North Ambulance, we have Rick Wagner and Terrence Nelson from North. So, as you go through discussions tonight, if there's any questions, they can be directed at those two entities, if there's something you got, what I'm capable of answering. The presentation from their end covered a number of topics that we've noted in there, fairly extensive, as they went over healthcare in New Prague, from the community board's perspective, board members' perspective. They took a look at the Mayo Clinic Health System in Prague, a growing vibrant medical practice. Third, the Mayo Clinic vision, the importance of an integrated EMS system and home hospital concept. And then finally, they talked about the Mayo Clinic Emergency Medical Services, their EMS, a comprehensive care for the community. At the conclusion of the presentation, I believe it was council member Bass asked when they would be in a position to provide EMS services. Their initial response, I believe, was six months, if I recall. And they clarified that, that they could possibly be ready by May 1st. That was how that kind of got left. Although, the primary reason for the ambulance matters, as I said, being on the council's agenda here in January, was simply related to the renewal of both the ambulance service agreement and the building lease agreement. We now have another provider desiring to possibly provide that same service to the city. That option didn't exist 10 years ago, when we took a look at putting together the ambulance transition from a community volunteer ambulance service for BLS or basic life support, and trying to transition to a new ALS system or a paramedic level service at that time. And part of that was in place before even I arrived, back in July of 2008. There were obstures of working with the hospital and North Ambulance, because North Memorial at that time was also contractually providing emergency services and EV support to the hospital. And seemingly it made sense to try to partner with those individuals, as this was all put together back beginning in 2008. Depending on where the council discussion goes tonight, and we've not had a lot, we've had the two presentations, but you haven't had an opportunity to have dialogue amongst yourselves and/or interaction with us and/or any additional information from the two providers, is that depending on the council's general feeling, the choice ends up being, electing to continue either with the current provider, or you look at moving and going in a different direction with another provider. One of the fortunate things that we have in this process is that we have two very qualified ambulance providers, normally who always have the luxury or the opportunity to benefit from this type of relationship, where you have a local hospital with the quality of Mayo Clinic Health System, as well as working with a fine ambulance provider, that being North, who is presently located in the city, but works extensively in greater Minnesota and in the Twin Cities in providing ambulance services. I have, just for the benefit of taking a look at that, is that I threw up on the screen, just to kind of give an idea. And I know it's a little hard to see, you've got copies in your packet, but this map is intended to show the operational sites and the air care coverage that is provided by North Ambulance throughout the state of Minnesota, as well as, can't quite see it, but in the metropolitan area. They provide extensive ambulance coverage as well. As I indicated, when I came here 10 years ago, I had the... No, I'm going to zoom in for you. I wondered, I didn't think I was doing anything, and all of a sudden it's all, not that much, but people can see a little bit, but I knew I didn't have quite that kind of control with this technology stuff. So, if it wasn't, I'm really better than I think I am. But in that process, I also had the luxury of going through the same transition that I just described for you, that occurred back in 2008 and '09, and the discussions that was implemented in 2010, is the same thing that occurred in the previous community that I worked with down in the southwest part of the state at being Marshall, as we went through the same thing, that we went from a community voluntary ambulance service and contracted with North Memorial Health in that transition. And so, I worked with them for over 10 years down there. So, in the working relationship both at Marshall and now in New Prague, is that we have been working, or I have been working with North Ambulance for over 20 years, and have had nothing but high-quality praise and successful interactions with them in the process. We also heard, Ken, can you shift down to the next one, in that North, when they were in for their presentation, talked about the services they're providing to New Prague, area up there in blue, as well as the regional participation that we have with the other entities that are part of the North Fairbald region. They include the city of Fairbald and the area around Fairbald, as well as with the city of Wasika. They are the two closer proximity cities that are involved in this mix with North Ambulance. This is also for the benefit, Ken scrolled down just a bit here, would you? No, up, excuse me, I'm sorry, where you can pick up a little bit up top, if you can't see. Duluth and Superior are the northernmost cities that Mayo provides service to. And then the Little Falls, St. Cloud area, Litchfield. And then, as we come down here to the south, our closest entities would be Mankato and Owatonna. And then, in the south, you've got Fairmont, Albert Rea, Austin, Rochester, and then over into Wisconsin. And I also believe they picked up Plainview, they had mentioned at their meeting. So, in taking a look at it, that as I just showed you, Fairbald region, assumptions that we take a look at it, with those that are in close proximity, would be both Mankato and Owatonna for the city of New Prague. When you look at all the information that's been shared, from our perspective, from staff and, and I'll use myself as well, on the surface, we have no reason to not renew the ambulance service with North Memorial, based on the quality of services that have been provided for the last 10 years. But should the council believe that some type of change in the ambulance provider is needed, we should talk about those specific reasons or rationale or basis to that, to ensure that we don't see any disruption of service, or that, you know, that in taking a look at it, that we're not comfortable with either the measurable barriers or elements or services that we're expecting out of an ambulance service provider. Over the 10 years, the city has not had to financially contribute personally to the funding of the ambulance services that have been provided by North Ambulance. Originally, when we started, there were contributions that were made by the townships, but those have been eliminated and they have gone by the wayside. I think in the first three years, there was also a financial contribution from Queen of Peace that in the startup, that if it did hit certain financial levels, that the hospital would make a contribution, which they did. But that was in the early original five-year agreement. But when they transitioned out and Queen of Peace was no longer Queen of Peace, when we did the renewal back in 2015, Queen of Peace and the hospital was not a party to the ambulance agreement like they were in the original agreement. In taking a look at this, in the discussion, and I don't think there's anybody that wouldn't acknowledge that having the Mayo Clinic Health System in town is, well, the hospital and clinic and the medical system that they provide for doctors and services and that, that there is an absolute benefit to the community, that one would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge that and to know that. And so, in taking a look at it, it makes it kind of very difficult as we take a look at this, is do we stick with the current relationship that we've had with North Ambulance, or do we make a change and go to something with the Mayo Clinic Health System. Included in your packet as additional information on this matter is that there were two pieces of correspondence that my office received. One is a letter dated January 30th from Rick Wagner, the director for the outstate ambulance services for North, and he's available later on if you have any questions. You can clarify with the letter that he provided in regards to a follow-up from the Mayo presentation that was held on January 21st. In addition, I also received an unsolicited letter from Dr. Michael Wilcox, who used to be the medical director for the New Prague Voluntary Ambulance Service. He had served in that capacity for approximately 37 years before we made the transition 10 years ago with North Ambulance, and that the medical directors now come from within North. And his suggestion, bottom line, was to keep the present EMS plan of care in place and focus upon a collaboration of both organizations to expand the role of EMS within the community health slash community paramedic sector. I think you heard in the presentation that Mayo Clinic proposed ultimately at some point to take a look at something, they're going to be moving out with a venture into the community this year in 2020. I forgot the name of it, Kirby.
Home Hospital.
Home Hospital. Home Hospital, in that regards. And then, separate from that is also taking a look at what can be done with the community paramedic program. The research that I've done tells me that North Ambulance has done that for a number of years up in the Twin Cities, that apparently hasn't migrated out to all of the cities that you saw on the map that I showed, as well as I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Drucker, that you guys have had a trial of that in Wisconsin, but have not rolled that out to all of your outstate cities either at this point. So, when you talk about the concept and you listen to that as a possibility, neither one of them are necessarily providing that in the outstate cities at the present time. And I would let Mr. Wagner talk about it as to what they are doing or have done in the Twin Cities as relates to that community paramedic program and some of the challenges and issues of trying to roll that out. Additionally, for any of the paramedics to do that, I believe under the education and training, that's another $300 of training, if I did my homework correctly, listening to Dr. Wilcox, who made a presentation at Rorke one day, he talked about that very program. And so, down the road, that appears that it can be a very nice piece on whoever's providing ambulance service to take a look at trying to do that, and how that integrates in with the hospital, obviously has some pluses to that degree. That kind of is the extent of really what I've been able to collect and pull together at this point, that really our direction, we need to hear from you as elected officials, that, you know, I think we've tried to, over the past two meetings, have each of the different entities provide information and an overview of, in North's case, what they've been doing and what they're capable of doing, as well as we heard, you know, the last, or excuse me, Mayo at the last meeting, what they think they can do and how they can provide service. And I think you see from looking at the two different maps that I've tried to show, as far as the territories, either one of the entities is very capable of providing ambulance service. And so, the question is, is that is there a reason and a necessity to change? Or if you are considering changing, my concern, and only caveat to you would be, is to adequately ensure that if there is to be a change, that we look at a period of time and that we don't just rush into a decision to make a change for the sake of making a change. And when you take a look at either the personnel or the coordination with dispatching, the interaction with our staff and the public and all those kinds of things, we want to make sure that we don't have any disruptions to the quality of service that we've been receiving for the last number of years. That there have been no official complaints, problems, or issues that I'm able to identify. The mayor and I sit on a meeting with North every year just to get an overview of what's happening and what's occurring. And there have been no quantitative or filed concerns or any issues associated with the service that we've received to date. I even did check, based on a conversation with a council member, that I did check with the state EMSR board, and there have been no complaints filed. And I told Councilmember Wolf that there had not been any, because if there had, either the mayor or I would have received official notice that was confirmed with me by the executive director of that entity. But yes, if there had been any issues or concerns, they would have been sent to us directly, so we would have been aware of them, and none have. Second part of in your packet, one of the pieces was a question about some of the designations associated with the accreditations. That when the materials came to us from North January meeting, I think the only thing that they showed is they had an accreditation for the commission of ambulance service from CAS, C-A-A-S, which is the same accreditation that Mayo Clinic Health System has. But Mayo went on extensively in their presentation to provide a number of other ones, and went back to North and said, I think from our previous interactions, is you have a number of other accreditations that you did list on the materials when you presented to the council. And so, that's why I asked them council, and so that's why I asked them to provide additional descriptions, so that you could see that both parties are very, very well qualified in this sense, albeit that North only had the listing of one on those materials at the January 7th meeting. So there's not a lot of additional materials in there. And so Mayor, I guess I would turn it back to you. The only other pieces I put were the actions taken by previous councils back in January of 2010, when we made the first decision, or when your previous body made a decision to enter into the contract with North Memorial Healthcare, effective May 1 of 2010, and then in April of 2015, when we did the renewal of that, that you can see those actions from historical minutes, and you can see kind of what occurred that way. So that's really all I have tonight. Under the proposed agreement, just from an educational piece, is that there's a one-year requirement in the current North agreement, is that for any reason the council would want to discontinue services, is that there's a one-year notice in there. We did that so that it was beneficial for both the company and for the city, not knowing whatever could happen down the road, if something came up that we felt that we wanted to get out of that contract. The challenge we have is that we have no vehicles, no equipment, no personnel under our auspices, and so that was the reason that if there was a desire to get out of that, whatever plan would be put in place, even to take a look at all of those elements, and we needed to have time to ensure that that could be handled properly, so that we didn't cause any of our residents or any of the patrons out in the ambulance service territory any issues on the delivery of service. So Mayor, it's really back to you for council discussion, and then if need be, to be able to call on either North or Mayo, if you thought you needed any clarification or information that you don't think that the staff have touched on.
Okay. First, I want to say, Michael, again, you've given us sufficient information regarding it, regarding both facilities, and I appreciate that. Again, I think what you stated, that both services are great services, they serve their territory as well, and they're both accredited, and we have a good problem to have in the city of Dupre, trying to make a decision on this. So I guess what I'm looking for from the council now, we've kind of heard both presentations, and we've kind of pushed it off to now, so I guess, is there anything additional that anyone from the council needs to hear, or if there's any questions that need to be answered? We do have both parties here right now to get anything, any concerns or questions answered. If not, I would, personally would like to prefer to move forward on this subject, rather than wait unless you guys feel that there's something more that you need to discuss.
We're pointing to, I thought we had discussed maybe doing a public comment period. I know Mr. McRum and Byrne were able to comment, but I, the last week or two between meetings, I had captured from other sides, both sides actually, I was surprised at how many people had a comment on it. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't allow a wider discussion to get at next meeting from the general public? Didn't we, I thought we kind of discussed that that last meeting, did we not mention that?
Kind of.
Yeah, that was a mention.
I would second that, if that was the, waiting for another, until the next meeting to make that decision. I did quite a bit of homework on it already too, and there was one last thing I wanted to do, and that was to take the tour of the Mayo emergency service. So it would be nice to complete that. I think, I believe I'm ready to make a decision, however, like I say, to give everybody their fair share of exposure. So if you were to put that into action, I would second it too.
Well, I, I want to say that I have received calls also from community members. One in particular has a background in providing paramedic services, having worked both North Memorial and Mayo. And the conversation was very educational to me, explaining the difference between the types of ambulance service, that just because it's an ambulance, it's not the same types of services, the same protocols that are used. And it was very enlightening to me to be able to have that dialogue with a person who's actually out working in our community, in other communities, with the Mayo ambulance service. So based on those discussions, I personally have a decision made of which way I would like to go. So, but if we want more discussion, I'm certainly willing to listen.
Yeah, I don't want us to sit up there in perpetuity. I feel like I'm leading one way too, but it has been pretty equal, the comments that I've received out in public, or through text or email, or phone calls, I should say. So I, I just wonder if we've heard from enough people, because everybody that I have heard from seems to have some type of vested interest in either one of the scenarios, the majority of them. But I'm just wondering if there are more people like Mr. McRum and Byrne that spoke passionately one way or the other, and if we open it up, just maybe you have the next meeting to see if there's anybody else in the public that wants to speak.
Just full disclosure again, I sit on the Mayo Clinic in Dupre community board, so I have no financial interest in Mayo. I don't have any relatives that work there, nor do I have any relatives that work at North Memorial. Bruce, why don't you pull your microphone in front of you, please?
A couple, I just, I think there's a very important issue, and so I don't, I don't want to feel like we're rushing into anything. We're talking about the business of saving lives, so I think this is a very critical thing. The other thing that concerns me very much is that we're a city council that's making a decision that affects probably just as many people that live outside of city limits. So we have a different fiduciary responsibility than we normally would have. So I feel strongly that it should be a part of our process that has either a public comment, written public comment time period, or if you want to do a public hearing or something, that probably should be part of the regular process every time this is redone. If we don't, I feel it's important that we give people the opportunity anyway, outside of Dupre, if they have a comment, to make a comment, and that should be part of our due diligence in renewing a contract. So I'm uncomfortable in voting for a renewal without going through more of the homework that may be required, just to make sure we've taken the opportunity to listen to people that are going to be served by this service. The, so I think public comment or public hearing would be good too. Mike mentioned I talked to the board, the licensing board, to get educated, and it wasn't really to file a complaint or to get information in place, but to understand what that's all about and what happens and how this works, because I wasn't familiar with the primary service area specifically, and so that's why I got educated. But part of the problem is I'm learning that, I think maybe as we all are learning, there's not a good way to measure performance yet on this pre-hospital type of service. There are certain things, but when we say that we've met our quality thresholds, I have no reason to doubt that, and I'd rather believe that, but there's not really, as I can find, and talking to Dr. Mike Wilcox, there's really not good objective information. I'm more of an analytical risk measuring kind of guy, and there's not good objective information out there. And maybe they can speak to how they measure their services to see if they provide a high level of service, what objective information they use. That would be helpful for us in the future too to measure. I know, Mike, you've included that, but I'm not sure at what point. I talked with the board about response times, and that's, I admit, that's not necessarily really good measurement of quality. Over time, that might be important, but response times can vary by the geography that you're in, what type of patients you're getting from one year to the next and things like that. So there's a lot of variables in that. I don't feel that we're in a position to try to look at alternative. Well, personally, I don't think we have a, I don't think we actually asked for, and given a proposal from Mayo, so that would be something we'd have to consider. But even if we were to get a proposal, I don't think we could respond to it quickly enough before May 1st. So in my mind, I think we feel comfortable that we've done our due diligence to look into negotiating and renewal of the contract. And then I would feel that it's appropriate to ask Mayo if they want to submit a proposal, and if they do, then create a process that we can consider that, and would be able to look at one year. The time that that would take place is sometime in the future. But I feel that Mayo deserves consideration of a proposal, whether we're going to want to do that or not is, you know, something that can be considered later, but they are a major community member, and I think they deserve the consideration of looking at a proposal. But I don't think it's appropriate for us to do that right now, but certainly I think we could do that in the near future, in the next year, or whatever that would be. Then we can set up parameters in how we would look at that, and make judgments about, assuming we have two proposals. But right now, we don't even know what the service, what kind of staffing they would propose, or what kind of equipment they propose. I've heard all sorts of things that maybe like you guys, there's different levels of service that could be incorporated into itself.
So we're all in agreement then, that we should hold this over until the next one, or maybe have an open hearing meeting, whatever we're comfortable with, because I would like that. I have made a decision, but purely out of due diligence, and to get more input from the community would probably, that would be a good idea, I don't know. So that's, that's what I'm asking.
So you're proposing doing a, having a meeting sooner than later, or just?
I would say hold it over until the next meeting.
Like Bruce's proposal?
Well, I don't want to delay it for that long. I believe that we can come to a fair answer by at least the next meeting, so, you know, everybody else has got the time to do their homework and open it up for the community to have an open hearing on it, so we can get feedback from them a little bit. And then if you want to staple it until the next one, then we can do that too. That way we can at least look into whatever is brought up from the public, you know, give us time, but then we still have, within the next month, have a decision on this. And so I don't know.
Well, but, but here's, here's the glitch in that, is that this contract is up and is due renewal May 1st, right? So I don't think that there's any reason to hurry a public opinion meeting, because we have to have ambulance services not be discontinued at the end of April. But then we need that time, Bruce, your point, that if Mayo Clinic Health System wants to come forth with a proposal, we need time to go through those proposals, understand, trying to match things apples to apples for the different services that are going to be supplied, before we would make a decision, if any, alternate decision. But I think what I'm saying here is that we should probably sign some type of contract with North Memorial to keep the services going, and then entertain looking at both services in the event.
Would you say clarify my, clarify my thoughts? I do feel that there should be some kind of public comment or public hearing whenever we look at renewing this kind of contract, especially since it deals with people outside of cities.
Right, right.
So I would hope that we have some kind of public avenue, that we could either make this by written comments, or have a public hearing, only that talks about the renewal of the contract. And if we were to entertain two different proposals down the way, that would be a different public hearing process.
Okay, all right, I understand where you're coming from.
But if somebody in St. Beninick wants to say something about the service we're providing as a city, I'd like to give him the opportunity to do it.
How would that change our mind in renewing the contract with North, by hearing from the public? I don't, I don't quite understand what input that would be providing in our renewal. What other service would we go with if we're all of a sudden getting negative comment?
Well, let's just say there's somebody in the public that doesn't know there's an ability to make complaints to the licensing board, but they have a complaint that they have. It would give them an avenue to say they can hear their complaint. And that complaint may be something of misunderstanding, that we might be able to clear up or help North Memorial with that issue, or maybe it's a valid complaint that we should take in consideration when looking at renewing the contract. And I'm not just saying that about where we're at now, but always in the future.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
Just like if banks merge, we have a public comment, or we used to do that anyway. But you have public comment periods, when you have major regulation changes, you have public comment periods, that's what I'm thinking. So there may be people out there that have, have an interest in saying something.
And I want to just clarify too, when I asked for a public hearing, I wanted to make a decision, I'm leading one way. However, I'd like to hear from more people, and I know that there's a time constraint, and I would be fully okay with awarding. And one of my concerns is that Mayo, it's going to be tough to get up and running within that timeframe, but I would be for extending it, maybe not a five-year contract, but a one-year contract, giving the time, to Bruce's point, allowing Mayo to come back then next year. So that's, I just want to clarify that, so. But I would like to hear if we could, I think maybe rip it to the next meeting, and if one person shows, great, we'll listen to it, maybe we'll get a few letters, maybe we get more emails. I've just been very surprised at how passionate people are on both sides of this.
Yeah, yeah.
On this decision.
Yeah, I've received calls and emails as well, some very short and sweet, others a little more lengthy, and oddly enough, it's not even leaning in one direction, so. But it's, it's still interesting to hear what they have to say. And, and I'm not opposed to that at all, I'm not saying that, I was just thinking, we're up against this May 1 deadline, and so we don't have time to entertain a proposal and try to figure out if we're going to go with one service or the other. I think what we want to do at this point, or I want to do, is go ahead and enter into a contract with North Memorial, albeit it could be for the one year as opposed to the three-year.
Or five years.
Or five years. Was this current, what five was, okay.
Right, and I would be fine with that too, I would just like to maybe at the next meeting, give an opportunity for me to hear from more people, or have them come in and speak to the entire council. That was true, both of us do that. So it'd be a two-week delay basically, in order to gather enough time at the next meeting.
Second, and it would be nice if there was more public, nobody's seen on it, so I realize there already was, efficient, but to really, anybody that does have any opposing viewpoints on this, so please come on in and say something, so that we know where you're coming from, or they're coming from too, you know.
The only thing that I can add, going back in historical, I mean, the council is free to do what they want, there's no requirement to hold a public hearing or not, and so you can serve any of that at your, at your desire. But responding to Bruce's comments, that if you go back in history 10 years ago, as the city provides police services, fire services, out into the rural areas, if you go back to the ambulance, is that it was a city-owned and operated system, and served by the volunteers within the service. There were contributions that were contributed by the townships surrounding Dupre, but all the financial decision-making and providing that service, just like we do with police and just like we do with fire, isn't put up to a public vote as to input into what we do there. Now, we made the council, the council made the conversion in wanting to upgrade the service that was being provided by trying to align with North Memorial Healthcare, as I said, because of, I believe, our, it was started before I got here, was the work that was being done between the hospital and North Memorial in regards to serving the AED.
was being done between the hospital and North Memorial in regards to serving the AED, the emergency department, and the service that was provided there. So there wasn't an official vote taken, or excuse me, an official public hearing that the council used to make their decision when they decided to make that conversion and contract with North Memorial 10 years ago, because the city was the one, through the revenue generation from the services as well as the township funds, is how the ambulance operation, the AMTs were being paid, vehicles were being bought, and the equipment was being purchased, was through that city-run service. And so it was really just a contractual arrangement with the territory that we had, that we serviced those areas out there, but there was no financial participation beyond the township contribution. And then like I said, within the first three to four years, that contribution went away. So there is no financial exposure to anyone outside of the city in that regard. If there had been something where North wasn't able to make a go of it, then there was always the consideration that they could come back and ask the city to participate, but not likely any of those in the surrounding area that we had no contractual way of being able to service. So choosing to do it is the council's choice, but there is not a requirement.
Right, I just want to clarify a couple things you said, make sure I understood. The fire is, rural fire takes care of, has an input on that, and they do, and law enforcement outside the city limits, Scott County and, and people, voters have an ability to, and rural fire, townships have ability to vote, so there's no representation for someone for ambulance service through their vote. City council, the way this system is set up by the state of Minnesota, the, the city has a license for people out, outside of the city limits, whether they like it or not. That's all I'm saying. And to give them the opportunity to say something, whether they had the chance 10 years ago or not, I just think is a good thing.
And at any time during the past 10 years, any of those residents or property owners living out in that service territory could have come to the city and provided commentary or input. But as I said, in the 10 years that we've had this, that has not occurred to date.
Correct.
So we haven't received any complaints, no concerns, no issues.
Formal complaints, yes.
Any, and, and I can deal with it if it's, if it's not formal, if it's an informal pass to somebody else that doesn't reach my office or formally doesn't come directed to the mayor and council.
And I'm not suggesting, I don't want anyone to walk out here saying that I'm suggesting that there was any complaints, I'm not saying that at all. All I'm talking about is the processes, that process, that people from outside the community have the ability to say something.
And the council certainly has the ability to study up that process to elicit that commentary, however they so choose.
So I guess the take I'm getting from the conversation is that at the next meeting, we would like to have a public hearing. A public hearing where the public can comment regarding the ambulance service as it currently is, or if they have any input, comments on if they've had any relationship with Mayo, or if they want, you know, if there's another ambulance service out there, Ridgeview for example, or something like that. I'm just saying that there's.
In the city, when we made that, when the council made that choice, there was discussion at that time. We didn't go with North. Obviously Mayo was not in a position to provide that service. Gold Cross did exist, we could have invited them in to, to do that. We could have asked Ridgeview, or we could have asked any of the other providers to potentially come in, but the council seemingly felt it was appropriate at that time in the discussions, that because of their involvement in the community and working with the hospital directly on the emergency department, it seemingly made good sense to partner in that arrangement and to not necessarily go through any type of competitive bid proposal to see what that looked like, that, that you feel that that was necessary.
Correct. Could we, or is it appropriate to put a small ad in, just soliciting comment if we're going to have a public hearing? So, so people outside of our normal city communications and all that, it's available to them, because we're talking about inviting people to a public hearing, and hopefully that would be great.
Well, the, the challenge we have, I don't know, I suppose we can do something very simple. Patrick, we've got till 10 o'clock in the morning. But we always have challenges now with the newspaper deadlines and what have you, is that I think we've only got till 9:30, 10 o'clock to be able to get something in, so I think we could probably create something small that can be placed in the newspaper, we can put it on the website and what have you, that, so we'll just have to create something.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting something very simple, public comments invited, as Dr. Mike has said, and others, people outside of here have no idea a lot who makes the decision on this.
Mike gave you a radio show on Wednesday, right?
Yes.
There you go.
Do, do you want to, I don't know if there's anything that further that you would like to have, that both of our two providers have taken the time to come tonight. I don't know if there's any additional information that either of them would like to provide. I can see Kirby nodding his head, and I'm assuming if Kirby's going to want to provide something, that Rick would likewise like to also have some comments on behalf of North, and I don't want to elongate the meeting, but there are a couple of resources there to make sure that you get all of the relevant information that you'd like to have, or give them the opportunities to weigh in as well before you move down the path after you solicit a document at the next meeting, as to try to determine what direction you want to head. So, Mira, I would leave it up to you to call on.
Kirby, if you want to, should I take that moment?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Mayor, I'd like to counsel members, thank you for giving us the opportunity to further clarify. I have two questions, and it's really just to help me get to a point where I can provide a draft agreement for both the ambulance garage and the service that you guys are comfortable with. And Burnham made a mention of it last meeting, to give North the opportunity to talk about their commitments in terms of a paramedic, community paramedic program, in terms of technologies in the rigs. We talked a lot about how we think quality differentiator moving forward into the future is having, having rigs in the ambulance with ED physicians on the camera, being able to triage and assess patients in their home before we put them in an ambulance and bring them to the emergency room for expensive care. I, I would love to hear if that's important to the council. It sounds like some of you have already made up your mind. Are you guys confident you know what the future holds with Mayo and, and community paramedicine, or cameras in the rigs, as well as North? Burnham talked about giving them an opportunity to talk about their future plans and their technological advances to make care better, care cheaper, care more efficient. So those are just the clarifying points that I'd like to hear from the council of, are those things you'd like stated in the contract as commitments to the community, commitments to the service, not just what hours we have paramedics at the ambulance garage, but also what's important to you guys to continue to advance the wellness and the wellbeing of our community and our patients? Is a community paramedic program something that's a material difference between one or the other, or is that important enough for you like it's stated in a, in a draft agreement? I think that would help us get, get some more direction on what's important to the council, because at the end of the day, whatever's important to the voting members' representatives is what's going to be important to who ultimately provides emergency medical services to this community. So thank you for your time tonight.
Well, Kirby, I can answer one of the questions that you had. We don't practice medicine, so we don't know what types of services, what type of care, the level of care, a particular ambulance service is going to give, the difference between the protocols the services have. But I also understand that the community paramedic program doesn't have to be tied with an ambulance service. If you want to provide that in our community today, I think, I heard that the Mayo Clinic Health System would do that independently of providing an ambulance service.
Sure, and, and as well as, as the vice versa, an ambulance service that doesn't have a healthcare delivery system in the community could also provide a community paramedic program. A part of the difficulties behind that is the economies of scale. If you have the hospital and you employ the paramedics in the community, they can make those visits during shifts or outside of shifts, but, but the professional licensure, the training that goes along with it, we talked about the extensive training needed to be placed into a community paramedic program. I think there's economies of scale there that may make sense for it to happen if you own both operations, but it might not make sense if you don't own both, if you own one or the other.
Yeah, but I, I can speak for myself, is I don't, I don't know what all of the services are available, the level of care. And I'm, again, I'm saying it because you, you understand the lingo, is that the protocols, the difference of the protocols. Are some protocols more broad so that it gives that paramedic more opportunity to provide care to that individual and get them to the right hospital facility, or some protocols narrower, where that paramedic doesn't have the ability to provide a different level of care, and instead it's just a transport to the hospital for ER care? So those are some of the questions that I have, because we don't know what, I don't know, I can't speak for anybody else. I don't know what all those levels of services are available. And I think that's what's important to me and to our community, is that when a, a person is in a terrible situation and they have to call an ambulance, I want to make sure that they are getting taken care of, not just a transport to the ER, but they're, they're going to get taken care of and kept in the best, I guess, health situation so that they are, they don't suffer, they're not going to pass away, they're not going to, you know, so there's a lot more that goes into it than just a transport to a facility. So it's those kinds of things that I don't fully understand.
And I think an extension of the agreement, maybe it's not the five years, but I think giving the open health system, myself and our organization, here an opportunity to help educate on some of those complicated topics, because you're absolutely right, they are complicated, and, and every, every run is different, and every person's different, so.
Right.
We'd appreciate that opportunity to continue to educate and potentially provide more context around what the value of a community paramedic program is, or what the value of those innovative technologies pre-hospital, whether it's in the ambulance rig or on a cart in the home, 3911 emergencies. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of quick comments, not to get in the big debate or anything, but just to clarify the Councilman Wolf's question about compliance, and I know you weren't alleging that there were complaints, but if there were complaints, official complaints to the, to the regulatory board, it doesn't apply. The city of New Prague owns the ambulance license, so they would get, Mike or the mayor would get that call from, that letter from the city, or from the Emergency Medical Services Regulatory Board, and then probably pass it on to us to, to address that, because you're the owner of the license, so we manage the license, so that's the way that would officially work. Just that, you know, Kirby talked about the community paramedics, and we, you know, in our letter, I put, my letter that I put that we have between the paramedic program, and things are evolving quickly, and things are evolving with the ambulance services too. Whether or not we're going to do telemedicine and visit with patients in their home and do telemedicine, that's all out in the air, but my question is, if we do that, what happens, if we're at home doing a telemedicine visit, what's going to happen when the next person needs an ambulance? And we're talking with the patient, with the physician in the ER, where's, what's going to happen then? So there's a lot of stuff that's evolving. So I think, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of things to debate and talk about, but one of my concerns is, we wrote up the contract, proposed contract, and now are, are we asking for a proposal from Mayo to one of us, one of North Memorial, because we wrote our, our contract renewal, not as a proposal, but just a continuation of services? So where are we going with that? Are you going to open it up for a, like a competitive bid, or where are we going? I just, I think those are things that you need to consider in where you're going, and when are we opening up, so. Any questions from you now? I think we're doing a good job, we've done a great job for 10 years, we're a proven entity, so, but I respect, and Mayo is an excellent service, so you do have a good, you've got a good, you're in a good position, but also a tough position, so, thank you.
Okay. Well, I guess in some sense, we're going to do a public hearing at the next meeting to get more public comment, but then what is the next step after that? I guess I'm looking for some feedback on that.
Yeah, the action that should be required on that is to, once we hear the open bid meetings, or the, I'm sorry, public comment meetings, then we'll all go back to, then the following, see, council meeting will take action, if at that time we want to go with a one-year, three-year, five-year, whatever, that's when that'll come in, come into play. And if we were to do it temporary, like a one-year, this is going to come up again next year at the same time, same, same subject, you know. I don't, like I said, I really want to get to Mayo Clinic and have a vote for that, take trivia by those.
Well, I'm just trying to clarify for Mike, and so that, we're finding a little public hearing, a public comment at the next meeting, and then are we going to move it to the following meeting to make a decision on renewing the contract and just length the contract, or will we, you know, that's, I'm kind of confused on what the direction?
Well, that would be, that would be my understanding, is we have public comment, but we do have to make a decision on renewing North Memorial's contract and for what period of time, what length that would, renewal would occur. And then throughout the coming months, we can have the Mayo Clinic Health System provide some sort of a, a proposal. And I then think we should have additional discussion between the two services and the levels of care and make a, make a decision.
My opinion also is that, that we would be looking at negotiating renewal of the contract with North Memorial after the public hearing, that takes place immediately or soon thereafter. I hope that we try to be fair, and North Memorial has done a lot of good things for our community, and we want to treat them fairly. They brought the service quality up for us in New Prague, they've been doing it for 10 years, so they've been here, they've been a good asset to the community, so I don't want them to feel that they're being put in a position or treated unfairly. I have issues about the contract term regardless of whoever it is, because I just wonder about the five-year time period, but my, my, my personal opinion is that we're looking at renegotiating the contract, and that's presented to us or accepting it, and then at a later time, talk about proposals, and then we have to execute a one-year termination timeframe if that would be chosen to do sometime in the future. But I'm a little confused after talking to the, the state board, my understanding, what I was told was a two-year license, but our contract's been around five years, so I just wonder why they are not coordinated somewhat.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, the license with the regulatory board is, every two years, the city renews their license with the regulatory board, it's not, it's not our license, like I said before, North, the city of New Prague owns the license. We take care of the renewal work, we do the paperwork, and renew the license for the city of New Prague, so that's a two-year renewal, so it's not really tied to the contract. I think for Mayo and for North, maybe I'm speaking on behalf of Mayo, but to do less than a five-year contract from our viewpoint, it's like, it's, especially if to come in as a new service and say, well, we'll come in for a year, that's a big commitment to, for capital dollars and probably hiring people, that would be really a hard thing to start up a service. For us to do a renewal for a little bit shorter period would be one thing, but I think to come in and start up a service for less than a year, or less than five years is, we're not committing.
My comment so much isn't the length, but coordination of time, because it seems awkward to me that we wouldn't try to dovetail the license renewals with the contract terms, because if there's an issue with one, it'll affect their ability to manage it.
The, the license renewal with the state is just like we do in wastewater or in water and other areas, is that we have a license that we go through periodically. and other areas, is that we have a license that we go through periodically. That has nothing to do with North Ambulance, that that's us paying a fee to the state of Minnesota for a two-year renewal of our PSA licensed area.
Well, my understanding is everything to do with what we provide to our service area, so North Memorial is very involved in.
We contract with them to provide service on our behalf within our territory.
Right.
The service contract we have with North isn't required to necessarily coincide with that two years like you were trying to align it. That two years has renewed five times in the last 10 years.
Right, if they don't renew our license, we still have a contract with them?
No, we would not, that under the contract, if we didn't have a license, we wouldn't have, under the provisions of the contract, we wouldn't be able to employ them to provide a service if we didn't have a license for the territory.
Well, maybe if we talk about that a little bit more with the attorney because I, to, I do think there's still some area to talk about with that.
Well, we went through that with the city attorney way back 10 years ago when we entered into this, and there were no difficulties or issues at that time. And it has not been an issue since that time, and we renewed it every couple of years.
Do you send in the application?
We worked with North and they sent it in on our behalf. I take a look at it and I have to sign off on it.
Okay.
And I'll be able to make a decision after the public hearing next week. I just wanted to, you know, four weeks ago, we had North's proposal, two weeks ago, Mayo's, and in that two weeks, I just would like a little bit extra more time to not only hear from the general public at an open forum meeting, but also give them time to reach out to me or run into them or interact them around the city to get some more feedbacks. I've been surprised at how much, but I'll be able to make my decision at the next meeting.
You may want to give your time depending upon what we hear or questions get raised or what have you with the openness for the public comment coming in, is you may want to leave your time, leave your time in the process to listen at the next meeting and to take that information in. In some cases, there may be additional research we need to do or clarification we need to get based on what you've heard, so it might make sense to move it to the March 2nd to make the actual decision if that's where you want to go.
Well, I guess I'd be fine with that too. I just, I was reading off of what some of the council members with the time constraints. I'm hoping that both Mayo and North will be here during that open forum meeting where they can possibly get up and acknowledge whatever might be said or provide the information, get that information and move from there, so. But I'm not opposed to waiting the next meeting if we need to get more clarification.
But if you think back in this process, is that we started out with simply a renewal. We had an overture of another entity wanting to put their foot in the door in the process. This was never set up to be a competitive process soliciting bids from either of the two entities to do this. And so it's really moving in a direction, as you look at it and think about it, is that it's not like going out and buying a piece of equipment and we get two bids or proposals to do something. We haven't set up or structured this process to say, all right, North, all right, Mayo, you know, give us your best proposal for a contract. Well, if we haven't identified terms, conditions, or things that we want in there, it's tough to go through that kind of competitive process. So North, as he said, had their agreement as a renewal agreement, no more, no less, as we've done the last time in 2015. And so whatever Mayo comes in with, they've seen that, and so I don't know whether North would want to have an opportunity, kind of looking at listening to where or how you're structuring the process, you know, whether they would like to re-modify their existing contract or agreement. So it puts it up in a bit of a cloudy process as to how both of them, you know, come forward and move forward. My understanding is that we're not having a public hearing, hearing to discuss whether we're going to one or the other. The other public hearing is just the merits of the service and whether we should renew the contract with North Memorial. If we, we don't even have a proposal, and like Mike said, I would agree, if we were going to go that route, we should really outbuy them some terms. And to be fair to North Memorial, they're, they're kinda punching at straw, you know, air because we haven't set up a process for proposals or competitive bid or.
No, we've never designed it.
So I don't think the public hearing should be really about the competitive bid, but there isn't any process being established.
If I understood what you were asking for was to, that the council's in the process of considering a renewal of an agreement with North Memorial for ambulance service. We've had another provider locally step forward and indicate that they think that they could provide service, the council is in our city and anyone from the public, if they have comments regarding ambulance service in general.
Everything except the part about we have a proposal from another service, because we don't have a proposal, we don't have any, we don't have any, we're not talking about.
You have interest expressed by another provider locally.
Right.
Mike, the goal is by the end of the week.
There you go.
It's in the process, it just takes a little while when you're leaving the department for a little bit bigger.
Well, I'm uncomfortable talking about a proposal since we even as a council.
Right, I'm just saying.
You have expression of interest, you know, I think we can draft the wording, I mean, I'm seeing exactly right, that we have an expression of interest from another local entity desirous of providing ambulance service. And so you're looking for a comment?
I'm not looking, myself. I'm not looking for any comments about the merits of Mayo providing the service at the next public hearing. To me, that's the next step. That's something.
So why do we want a public hearing next week?
I suggest a public comments or a public hearing to let the people in our service area provide comments.
Okay, to what end though? To what end?
To, for the renewal of the contract.
To renew or not renew, or to renew for a different period of time? Because we have to renew for some.
Right, whatever we decide, but the people in our service area are providing, being provided a service, so just giving them the opportunity to comment whether they want to comment, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, and that information would help us in our negotiations with renewing the contract. I expect there may be nothing there, but I think there's merit in allowing people the opportunity to have a voice in the service that we're providing or that we're voting on providing.
But no, and I agree with you, I just was trying to get, understand the timing of it in deciding the renewal contract. So are you saying to have comment and then we make a determination if we want to renew for the full five years?
Could be that.
Okay.
I think I understand now is that basically the time and the opportunity is at present for the consideration of renewing the ambulance contract. Does anyone have any public comments associated with the renewal of the ambulance?
Exactly, yes.
I'm trying to clarify with the council, I'm trying to read five different people on what should be in this, in that process, so if it's the fact that we're at the stage of looking to renew the ambulance contract, does anybody have any public comments one way or the other? End of story.
Exactly. And sometime later, if the council decides that they want to open up or discussion on proposal for that, then I think that's appropriate to set up our process. But I don't think it's very, well, that is, ambulance, they'll make a decision that quickly about switching services and things like that.
I agree, Bruce.
I agree.
Okay, yes?
Uh, any comments?
Sure, can you come to the board and speak your name and?
Yeah, you can say that.
Hello, so my name is Justin McHardy, 1214 Olivia Street, southeastern town. My only concern with the public forum, first, I want to thank you guys for being so diligent on this and investigating it because it is a serious topic. As a community member, it makes, it's of concern to me for multiple reasons, but my only concern is with the public forum is how it'd be presented, because what I don't want to see is I don't want to see people coming in here and saying, well, I don't like Mayo because of this, or I don't like North because of this. And the problem is, is with Mayo and North, both of them probably won't be able to elaborate on a lot of these issues. They're very specific and a lot of it goes into patient privacy that, you know, we can't, can't be elaborated for that specific issue. And I know with other things like construction and stuff, I don't know if the city, I mean, does the public have input on who receives awards for like construction, like who's doing Main Street? Because this is a very specialized topic and a layperson doesn't know the differences between, you know, the ambulance in Montgomery, ambulance in New Prague, ambulance in Shakopee. And so I just don't know what kind of input would be valuable from the community in that aspect, because as a layperson, I don't know anything about construction, so I wouldn't be able to say, you know, pick this construction company over this construction company because they have XYZ or they have, you know, ABC. So I'm just wondering, you know, with moving forward on a public forum, how you guys would want to present that? Maybe just written ahead of time prior to the next meeting? Would it be people like me, Spain, standing up here and talking? What I don't want to see is just a lot of different scenarios, because we don't have a Mayo ambulance here in town. So if anyone has a specific experience with an ambulance, it's most likely to be North Memorial, and it's not going to be comparable if we don't already have a Mayo ambulance, if they haven't done both, it's hard for them to give input.
Well, I totally agree. And what I'm looking for is just giving, I've had two weeks and I've been, not inundated, but I've had many, many people comment on both sides. I would like another two weeks before I make a decision and just see where it goes. And the public forum, I don't want to get into pointing fingers and blame, and I hope that's not what it's gonna be, and that wasn't what I was looking for.
Yes.
And I don't even know if anybody's gonna show up, but the fact is, it seems to be a very passionate issue. Two weeks is gonna give me some time to make some, get some phone calls, get some emails, respond to them, and take a look at the bigger picture and weigh the various options. I think North has done a wonderful job. I think, I've used Mayo Services at the hospital, and I think they do a wonderful job. I'm sure both of them do a great service, but I think we just need, it's such a passionate issue, to give the voters some more opportunity to contact the elected officials or to come in and speak in an open forum, but not point fingers. I'm not looking for that, and I'm hoping the mayor will shut that down if it goes on too long, because I don't want to listen to a million stories about what they did wrong and what they did, you know, so.
Well, I think the important part's gonna be is that you're holding this public commentary to hopefully receive comment on ambulance service and that people aren't choosing other medical experiences either at the clinic or the hospital or other outside avenues and attempting to bring that into this arena that you're talking about ambulance service.
Exactly.
So it'll be important to be able to, you know, to handle that in that fashion.
So I should bring my gavel?
As I suggested, I don't feel it has to be a public hearing. I think a public comment period works also, and.
I think I would be more comfortable with that. I mean, let the public know they can contact their elected officials specifically about an ambulance service, because to Justin's point, we don't need to be hearing about individuals' medical issues or what happened to a relative or hearsay, but specifically to an ambulance service. So those that are listening to this evening, feel free to contact me by phone and city email, and I'm happy to have a discussion with you.
If we go to the public comment, I think it has to be a written request. Well, I would prefer it to be written because I don't know what that person's saying to you versus what that person's saying to someone else, if we only have the same information, if it's just an oral.
Well, what we would normally do in this case is to, that people can either provide written comments or they can appear at the meeting and provide an oral comment.
And that's fine, I was just suggesting a written, no oral, but if you want to do a public hearing.
Well, I, you know, fundamentally, there's not a requirement that it be a formal public hearing, is that the council is receiving public comment and there will be time at the February 18th meeting where people can appear before the council and provide comment about ambulance services that they've experienced or received, or in lieu of appearing, they can also choose to provide any written comment that would be shared with the council as well.
So I think you got the parameters down, don't you? I mean, we've been talking about it for almost 45 minutes. Are we clear on what we plan to do next week?
I would prefer written comment.
Maybe two weeks ago, we did have a public opportunity for people to speak rather than.
It wasn't, it wasn't announced that it was a public.
But it was still given.
Well, all of our meetings are open meetings, but when there's a specific topic, then we do allow the public to know what that topic is so that they can attend. But I'm just saying from my perspective, I would prefer just written comment.
I'd like to hear both. If they want to come in and stand at the microphone and say a few words, let them, some people don't have email, they don't like to write a letter, they don't like to type, I don't know, they can still give me a phone call. I really am looking just for two more weeks to gather more information, because as I said, I'm very surprised at how much, how much passion there is on both sides. I just want to make sure I'm doing the right, taking the right decision and not too hasty. So that's why I'm asking for two more weeks. If they want to speak at the meeting or they want to send in a letter, like Dr. Wilcox, that was very well stated here, I don't care how they get the comment, just I want to give them two more weeks to reach out to me.
Mike's looking, I'm.
I think I have what we need.
Okay, because I'm confused. I mean, I think we're looking for calling a public comment period, regain in the next meeting, in which people either submit a written comment, which will be either read into.
Will it be provided to you?
Provided to us, or we'll have.
Opportunity to take it or provide oral comment.
Just regarding ambulance service, not regarding any situation beyond that.
Mayor Nicolai, they could drop off a written comment to Mr. Johnson at City Hall also.
Yes.
We'll direct all those written comments to the essence.
Okay.
But we gotta get done tonight so we can have time tomorrow to write this.
We almost, we almost looked dysfunctional there for a second, right?
Almost, we did look dysfunctional. Okay, thank you. Next.
All right, so at our last council meeting, we had discussion on some animal ordinance amendments. The one comment that we had and ended up having tabled at the January 16th meeting was regarding whether dog or cat could replace the word animal, and it was in relation to the control of feces. I talked to Scott Greg, city attorney, regarding that. He recommended keeping the word dog, keeping the word cat, and then adding the language or other domesticated animal into that section 90.08. So trying to cover the gamut of any other domestic animal that may or may not be allowed in the future. So he felt that covered that while still mentioning dog and cat. So that was really the only change that was made in the language from when we last met two weeks ago. Other than that, Scott looked over the rest of the language as well and thought everything made sense and cleaned up some of the language regarding certainly the renewal of annual pet licenses for dogs every year to the calendar year.
Okay. All right, that kind of the reading then? I guess I'll make the first reading of the changes to our chapter 90, ordinance number 309, chapter 90 regulations from the, the change that Ken has recommended. And I got a second by Rick Seiler. If there's any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Now we get to the fun part, right Ken?
Yep, all right. I will not go through every detail of the three reports here, but I did want to. I will not go through every detail of the three reports here, but I did want to provide a general overview of these reports. We take a look at the council annually regarding our permit statistics, our vacant lot inventory and then our business inventory. And they really do go hand in hand and fund themselves to the state of the city, our construction activity and our business activity that we've had for the last year in 2019. I really start off with the growth statistics, as we call it, which is really permit data and taking a look at how compares from year to year. I'll flip through you, size on the overhead as we go through. Regarding single family home constructions, we kind of break this down to single family homes, multifamily and then overall housing units. So overall, from last year to this year and even if you go back to 2015, you know, that five-year look back, you know, we're in a good level amount of growth subject to some period there in 2017 due mainly to the Prava Village spiking our units and then we have some town home development as well that came in late 2016 and in 2017 as well off of Raven Street. But other than that, we've been pretty even on our housing unit construction. One thing to note from last year to this year specifically, you can see the value of the homes are very, very similar, but the per single family home valuation per unit was down almost $9,000 a unit. Some of that had to do with the number of homes that were constructed from a particular builder that built more of a starter home. That's not necessarily a bad thing, that's, but a lot of the market demand has been here in Dupre. But just wanted to point that out. That's where the new construction, single family home value was down. Regarding townhomes, we did have two townhome units constructed this year, which is down a couple from last year, but overall our housing units was the same for 2018 and 2019. So again, we've been very consistent in that, that end. Value's been very similar as well over that same time period. So again, I think, hopefully we're getting kind of a more normal, what we can expect from year to year on our construction, but that'll obviously tie into our vacant lot inventory that we'll go over here in a minute, but that kind of paints a picture of where we've been for residential growth. Now jumping into, see there's the housing units that you can see again, we've been consistent the past two years on a number of units, but you know, going back five, taking out that aberration in 2017, we've been, we've been pretty consistent with that. Commercial industrial permits, now this is where we had a very, very busy year, not as much in number of projects, but in value of projects. Take a look at this, we've been, you know, kind of steadily going down, but we've had a lot of smaller projects over the past few years. Where we see our big increases, value of those permits. We had a huge year in construction, value of industrial and commercial permits in 2019, a lot of activity. We had obviously the big addition and remodel at Cobhorns. We had a fairly large addition at Electromet. A big addition at Belzer Ford after that was annexed. Those were the top three, you know, in the valuation as plays into that. But we also had a new building in Braithauto in the industrial part that also adds into that value. I think this will continue into 2019. We already had a quick trip on tap for, or 2020, excuse me, already had a quick trip on tap to start construction here, very likely as soon as they can get the plans completed and development agreement will go in front of you guys at the council level here, hopefully within the next couple of weeks and that'll get them off and running. We just had a permit come in for an addition on a strip mall by Cobhorns in the Dupre Commons area, so construction activity is still very high, so we're starting off here Regarding public permits, and I think this was kind of alluded to by Mayo a little bit when they did their presentation two weeks ago, indicating some of their investment into the community. We had a number of permits last year, although low in value for remodeling the various portions of Mayo Clinic, Health System Hospital in town. And then we've already received one permit from them here in January in 2020 as well. Smaller value, but a number of these smaller projects. And I think that's kind of where the public projects have been and will continue to be, some renovations at the high school, central education campus. So we had a number of permits with the valuation of smaller and you can see that here. We didn't have the big value permits for the public as we did in years past where we had big things happening at the schools or that type of project. So there's always one area or another that keeps our activity busy and keeps the value high. So public permits, number is up, value is down. So we just kind of see that throughout all the areas of construction, but again, we're very busy. And I expect that, as I said, we're starting off year busy, just the activity we've had from the end of 19 and 2020. So hopefully that provides a decent overview of our permit stats for 2019 there. And let me jump ahead to the next slide here. I'm going to jump a little bit from the agenda, so what ties in real nicely with our permit stat report is our vacant lot inventory. And, whoop. This is a little bit for you. All right, so this map is our residential lot inventory that's available. We're down to 105 lots available in the city. We had upwards of 500 back when the economy had basically taken a break from any major construction going on in town. And so we've really had construction take that number down and, you know, we're down in that four year at most availability for single family homes available. You can see smaller pockets in areas, but still good concentration into Helsinki Acres, which is kind of the more starter home type neighborhood. Scattered in the Prague Estates area, Village Street most notably, and then the Eastland Development, which recently opened up in early 2017. And then Homefield additions and older development with more starter home, although there's been higher value homes going in there more recently. And then there's only a small handful out in Raven Stream, by the Raven Stream Elementary, but the quality of lots is not, but there had been years ago, there's very few walkout lots remaining. Lots that are left over have been picked over, over the years for one reason or another. And I have talked to a couple of the various vendors, Randy Kuvish and Katie Witt Construction that both own land and could develop more housing. They're very interested to obviously see the report, we share that every year with them, but I think as we're getting closer to the 100 lot mark here, I think it's spurring their thinking of, okay, where should we open up some new development? And quite frankly, having our sewer study done helped inform that ability for them to know where they can look at developing and where sewer's available and how they can get lots in line quickly. So we're not in any problem in being able to allow plats to occur and developments to open up, but it will take the developers to take that initiative and to do that. And I think, you know, those two developers represent a number of the lots on the map here still, so they may be willing to let that number drop a little bit further, but certainly with their own bottom line, I don't see them letting things come to a halt by any means, but I think they, they know that, that inventory is dwindling and walkout lots are just not out there as they're intended.
Ken, if I could piggyback on that, that as the council, as you have discussions, people in the, in the community are out about as you are, is that number one, the city is not a developer of lots. We assist the developer as he brings a proposal forward about the construction of streets and the extension of water and sanitary sewer, but it is the private sector that actually builds and develops the lots. And so as we take a look at this going forward, is that even though we provide this information and might encourage and let the private sector know what is occurring, it's up to the private sector to decide whether they choose to move forward in the construction of lots and putting together a plant at the city, unfortunately.
And just to build up on that again, I think we're in a good position to have the developers move forward, but it is there, they need to take that step. Regarding commercial lot availability, take a look at the map here, we're actually down to 10 vacant commercial lots in the city limits, which is down six from last year. It was also down over 25 acres from last year. We had a number of lots come offline, a big chunk right in front of Raven Stream Elementary. Calvary Church bought that lot, that took out 13 acres of commercial development there. We had another smaller lot out there that Pat Sullivan bought, that was being going. And then the Quick Trip Development took three little blocks offline and over seven acres of land from that total. So again, that's kind of dwindling down, so we've got a collection of lots basically out on that east side of town here that are available, nothing large, but we do have land available obviously at this point. And, you know, we don't have typically local developers that do commercial development, although Witt has stepped into that role at times and Kuvish has stepped into that role at times, but nothing on any major scale. But certainly that's dwindling and again, we are prepared for the growth in development. The only thing I would point out is as our sewer study noted, further large-scale growth on the east side of town would take a trunk sewer line and getting that feasibility study completed, if we would want to choose to open up larger tracts of land, basically north side of the highway by Belzers, that type of thing. We can handle things with temporary solutions like we did with Belzer in short term, but long term, we'll take larger trunk line out to the east side of town. But I'm not worried at this point. Again, we're zoned correctly, we've got capacity at the treatment plant, but just pointing that out and want everybody to be aware of how our development on the commercial availability has changed. Regarding industrial, the land basically that we have available is our seven remaining industrial lots on the industrial park. Two of our lots of the original nine, Business Park 11 addition, sold. Braithauto and Hansel Homes and Dynamic Woodworking. And then we have the additional land directly to the north, approximately 80 acres from the Mox family. So we still do have quite an availability of industrial land we're building on at this point, so I think we're in a good, good position as far as that goes and our, our annual build down of our industrial inventory. So I think we've got a few years left of that to go.
But again, with the right project, depending on whether we need, is it could get several lots all at one time and that could change the picture if history hasn't shown that in this sort of case.
So that's really all I have for the vacant lot inventory and then that really leads into what I don't have any slides for is our commercial building on it. So myself in broken chamber, take a look annually at our changes in the business community. Businesses that have moved into town, that have closed, that have maybe moved from one part of town to another, expanded, that type of thing. And, you know, haven't seen really too much of a change from last year to this year. We did have 12 new business openings, that was down from 16 in 2018. And then we're up on business closings for over what we had for total of 21 last year, we had 25 closings, we've changed this year. And it's not all bad, the changes are actually, where they maybe just moved from one part of town or another. But I did want to point out some notable new businesses and I have others listed in here, but Braithauto and the industrial park being notable new business that moved into town from outside of city limits. We annexed the car dealership properties, Ford, Chevy, Chrysler, Jeep, Dodge, to name a few, that they sell at those areas. And I think that was a big win for the city and obviously has allowed them to continue to explore expansions. I know the Chevy dealership will be doing some improvements this year, connecting to water and sewer and then updating their parking lot, for example. So those are notable to point out. And then changes aren't always bad. As I noted, we did have Miller Milling announce their closure. ShopCo closed in the spring of 2019, but we also had existing businesses such as Cobhorns complete a major expansion with an addition and then remodel further in their commitment to the community. And a number of other businesses that, you know, maybe moved from one area of town to another, that type of thing. So I guess the other one I would point out, and I didn't, wasn't initially going to call attention to, but we had a business retention visit with Tech Support of Minnesota, which is a tech support company in the basement of CSSW McCollins. And they recently went through some ownership changes and they're looking to expand within the city as well, move out of the basement of that building and be more of a prominent business in the community, a better presence on, you know, a street with a storefront. So there's always activity going on. It's always fun to see the changes from year to year and, you know, we have these records if you ever want to see it going back, I believe, full 20 years now, if you want to see changes from year to year. We share this information with the Scott County First Stop Shop and they're always kind of amazed that we have tracked that for as long as we have and they find it very useful in how New Prague is continuing to change but grow and I think it's, it's a neat thing to do. It does take a bit of time to track from year to year, but I think it helps us keep a good pulse on that, helps keep us engaged with Chamber and keep that relationship working well. So overall, it was a busy year and I think it's a good place to be at this point.
You gave me a lot of data now for the state of the city. The city address I have to do to Chamber, I suppose, so perfect timing on it. No, great. Anyone have any questions or issues? And I want to thank Ken for providing us information. I know it's, is very helpful. As I mentioned in my radio show, that we're, I figure about four to five years, you know, if we continue at our 21-year pace, that we're going to run out of lots, so that's a good problem to have.
The other piece you don't have with this, but we provided it to you in the budget process, is looking ahead to what our 2020 tax capacity numbers look like and what they've done for the last seven years. So as you look at the information that Ken is showing you there, is we've seen that tax capacity number grow, I think by about $2.5 million over the last seven years, which just continues to frame up all of the construction information, residential, commercial, industrial that Ken just talked about and what that's led to with the growth in our community tax base.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have the consent agenda. I just wanted to make one note that in the council meeting minutes on Tuesday, January 21st, about three quarters down the page, we're talking about after the discussion, it was moved by Nicolai, second by Bass Propose, use of incentive clause in the project construction contract. This would be done in cooperation with Bendat and the city share of the obligation would be $25,000. The motion passed four to one, it was not a all voted in favor, so I just want to make that note. So when we approve the... So when we approve the consent agenda, that would be a correction that will be, has been made already by Barr.
Yeah, I would read all voted in favor. Except councilmember Seiler who voted no. Motion carried four to one.
Side out the only change that I'm aware of. So does anyone have any questions or any statements or comments on anything in the consent agenda?
Two questions, just real quickly, too. I don't want to drag it out too long. The new rig utility commission, allowing them to buy the capital equipment stuff? I just want to get the council's feel. I'm worried about the mill closing and the loss of that revenue that's coming in, and now we're still moving some of the stuff that we...
All you're doing with this is they're asking in light of that, instead of going out and spending all that cash to do that, all they're asking for at this time, subject to the utilities board making the decision to move forward with any of those improvements, is the abilities to finance this using general obligation bonds as capital equipment certificates.
Okay, so I read it wrong. They're not going to, this just gives them the approval, to approach the commission?
Well, it would be done with, the council would have a voice in that recommendation coming to you, but before they go out and do it and then try to come to us after the fact and say, well, could we finance that and use capital equipment certificates? Before they go out and do anything, this is kind of a heads-up piece that gives them the abilities that, that it's their intent in the sense that if they choose to exercise that intent is another question, it just gives them the abilities to look at the financing of that. Just like we did this last year with the bumper truck and the front-end loader and the other piece of equipment, is that we finance that using capital equipment certificates and then pay those off, we'll pay those off over, what is it, five to six years?
Okay, so they are going to purchase the equipment in February of 2020? It just really has to do with the financing?
No, no, no. The intent of this resolution is for them to preserve their abilities to be able to use capital equipment certificates as a financing alternative.
Okay. Or I'm getting confused. It says to avoid price increases. Staff will be purchasing the equipment in February of 2020. That sounds pretty definitive to me, as opposed to, so they are going to purchase the equipment in February?
And I haven't been involved in that extent.
Let me just comment, since I've been involved in this.
Sure.
It's definitely, the equipment is being purchased as, it may have already been purchased but not delivered yet. It might happen over the next 30, 45 days, 60 days before it's delivered, but it's definitely being purchased. What this resolution does, primarily when you do financing like that, you have to finance within like 30 or 60 days of the purchase. This gives the, if this is approved, this gives the commission the ability to finance it sometime in the future when the city does their bonding for the street. So if, if the financial condition of utilities is altered significantly in the way of the mill or whatever, and it's expected that the budget's going to change or alter it sometime this summer, when there's a better idea what the effect of the mill is going to have. So if there's a reason that the commission would decide to want to finance instead of using the cash, they can reimburse themselves. They can get the cash back out of their checking account basically, because they're using that to the purchase. But this gives them the authorization to do it sometime in the future, and you can only do that if you pass a resolution like this.
Right. My true question is, is should we be purchasing a new utility service truck, not knowing, because I sat with Bruce, he told me that we're not going to know the finance effect until June. My question is, is should we be purchasing a tractor back home right now, and should we be purchasing the utility service truck right now with all this unforeseen stuff? And how is that going to affect the budget?
Well, I think it's a good question. The way the discussion that occurred at the meeting was really after the review of the 2019 information, the utility commissions really were so strong, and it was way above plan for the year. So there's additional cash that was generated last year that helps offset that. So that's why it was, you wouldn't need to finance it right now, because there's this extra cash that was above budget. And I wanted to say it was $600,000 over the planned budget or something, the revenues of the utilities commission. So that alone would have carried the purchase of this.
For the $395?
Yeah, so now if June comes around and the projection for the end of the year is that we lost so much revenue that it can't compensate for that, then you could come back and finance and replenish that cash.
I just want to make sure, I guess, that I understood that and you guys had that conversation. It doesn't say anywhere in here that there was a surplus of $600,000, or, you know, I feel that was a bad word.
But I think that's where, when you take a look at why do you have a utilities commission, you expect them to look at that and make prudent financial decisions and the renovation of how they proceed. No, you don't at this point, because we don't have all the auditing done to report on all of that, but they have enough within that area that as they look at that, knowing that we're not going to have all of the utility revenues to the degree that we might have expected out of the mill, but we take a look at cash balances, we take a look at the financial operation, all of that analysis and work goes on before we just move forward with buying. We're doing all that analysis that, I know you may not see that and know all of that, but that is occurring before we move forward to do any of those kinds of things.
Yeah, well, excuse, maybe I'm a little cynical there. I just wanted to ask the question. Now I feel much better after hearing that answer. That's all I wanted. I just, I wasn't trying to imply that they didn't, but I need to hear that, and it wasn't listed in the memo.
We try to do that between finance at my office and the department hands that oversee various operations, is that, you know, we don't just make these decisions in a vacuum without looking at all of the relevant factors that come into play, whether that be the cash balances, whether it be potential loss of revenue, that we look at the budget, that, you know, all of that goes into our planning process that we use, both with the utilities commission and with you.
I just wanted to make sure.
Was that the only?
Yeah, I have another one that's minor, and I can ask that off this, but I've got enough to approve the consent agenda. As a matter of fact, I'll, nobody else has.
Any other comments? Second. Okay, a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Rick Seiler. If there's no other comments, I'll approve the consent agenda, say aye. Any opposition? Okay, miscellaneous. Mitch, you got anything?
No.
Pat? Jim?
Just call attention to the tech update. We're making progress with CTS.
Yes, I did, I asked Mike to kind of give us a little update, and I appreciate the little, kind of let you send out, kind of show where we're at.
Yep, we hope to be totally done by the end of May, but CTS thinks it'll be done closer to the end of March, so.
Okay.
Going well.
Michael? Barb? Maggie? None?
Two things. Chief, I'm wondering if you've influenced that software that you talked about buying for $5,000. Has that been...
The Lexapro? Yes, we are moving towards that right now. They are taking a look at our current policy and mapping that into their policy, and then Tim and I did a webinar with them last week, and we will look at setting up the schedule for turning over those policies and connecting them.
Great. And then, I don't know, Mike or Chuck, if you could comment on, well, first transitions, that was a good...
What do you mean, the hiring of Kirk? Yeah, I think we had our first meeting last Tuesday, and I think I mentioned to Mike, Mike wasn't at the meeting, but I think Kirk was probably more engaged than he's ever been, and I think it's part of the, you know, it's his name on the, on the contract, and he presented a proposal, or we're going to kind of get involved in it. It's called, I think it's the Private Country Club of the Twin Cities or something, where individuals join a club, not actual golf course, but they pay like $55 a month to get this card. And now that we're under, going to be a part of that group in Montgomerys, Creek Spandis, Boulder Creek, and that, so someone who has this card will come and play, can pay, you know, they'll make a tee time, and they do not have to pay for green fees. If they want to rent a cart, they do rent a cart, but then Kirk will report how many people have played under this program, and then we will get reimbursed from this program. So it's just a way of getting out there, and I guess after Kirk initiated the contact with a guy who was out on Facebook, and there was like 200 hits that said, I've heard that course is a great course, can't wait to play it, type of thing. So we have some of that thing going on, so, you know, I feel that that's, you know, like I said, I think I feel Kirk's more engaged. We have our first bingo on Thursday. Kirk feels that they got it all handled. They're going to offer burgers and chicken sandwiches and keep the, you know, just chips and stay away from the fryer, because that seemed to be our biggest problem, because it would lose heat and things, and so I plan to be going up there, helping them. I also talked to Patty today in regards to that, that I'm going to kind of do a little P and L for each bingo night and see how we're doing and report that to the board, and then I can give you guys results too, just to kind of feel, actually, what do we make on a bingo night? Patty figures that that should be pretty easy to do, since there's no other activity, the revenue should be, you know, there, and they have the cost of goods already tagged in on what they're selling, and Leah does the time card, so she, Patty should be able to get me the labor for each night, so we can kind of get a guide on how we're doing, because I think we have the next eight, the final eight. I feel good about it. Now we just need Mother Nature to give us an early spring and a dry summer, not only for the road project, but for the golf course. Anything else? I think, the only thing I really had is I did talk to Ken before the meeting in regards to that beginning. Contact from a lady from Lawnsdale, whose husband worked at Miller Milling, and they kind of got a group that's going together there. They are working with Dennis DeBorke and the New Craig Historical Society, kind of getting the, like, the history of people who worked there and things like that, and they've talked about, they're trying to get some money and some grant money maybe to have a banchero in a park, and I mentioned that, you know, Ken would probably be, you know, the park board might be interested, but then we kind of talked before the meeting, Maggie was involved about the little square that, in town next to Pine Hill.
Central Plaza?
Central Plaza, being that the mill was one of the longest-standing businesses in town for over 120 years. Maybe that would be somewhere that they want to go meet somebody to kind of highlight that too, so I will pass that information out. That's all I have.
All right, you want to adjourn?
You got a motion to adjourn? Second by Sean Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. I'm going to go have a quick cigarette.
Yes, I am.